Welcome to the Flutton School Committee meeting for March 27, 2023. Joining us here, we have Schofield, Mrs. McBride, and Ms. Terrence. Thank you for joining. I do not promise excitement, but we'll see what we can do. Anything you guys wanted to bring to us? All right. So let's run through this. Folks, have a chance to take a look at the minutes from February 27. Motion to accept the regular session minutes from February 27, 2023. You want a second? Okay. First and second, all in favor? Aye. And then we also, we have a surplus of equipment in the Denne kitchen. I don't know if folks have a chance to see the letter. Anyone else you wanted to add about it?
Megan Aaron Holt is asking that you please just declare the steam kettle and the steamer in the Denne Elementary School kitchen as surplus, now that she has applied for some grants for new equipment or materials.
I believe she actually received the grant, so.
Yes. I believe we have a letter in our folder denoting that. So with that understanding, realizing that the school can't technically get rid of anything that we purchased using school committee approved dollars without this, I make a motion to declare surplus the steam jacket and kettle and the steamer in the Denne Elementary School kitchen.
I do have a second. And I know that she notes in that letter that, you know, we could do something about that if we wanted to. We've got to go to the building. I do not think we have any interest in that. I would very much prefer to hurt whatever she needs to make it go away. And I also, I think it's important to note to folks out there that some of the equipment that we're getting rid of has been here for 50 years. So it's definitely time for an upgrade. I'm sure that will actually have some significant impact on our electricity bill.
Megan's excited about it.
So there we go. So we had a first and second, all in favor? Aye. And please thank her for that. It was great.
Thank you.
Okay. With respect to the, we have.
Five substitutions.
Okay. Yeah, so we had the multiple teachers association as well as the aides. Last year when we did our three-year contract, we put a provision in there, given how unsettled things were with respect to inflation and so on, we said we'd come back and talk about cost of living a year later with the mistaken belief that things would be settled and sorted. And here we are a year later, not quite so much. But we did meet and we have agreed for both sets of contracts to do a 3% for the second and third years of the contracts. So I'd like to thank both the teachers associations and our aides for the negotiation as well as acceptance of that. So I believe we need to make a motion and vote each of those.
And make a motion to accept the 3% increase for the next two years for the teachers contract.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
And make a motion to accept the 3% increase for the next two years for the aides' questions.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you. And Jason, over to you. I'm going to do a second read of the policies.
Appreciate a motion to waive the actual reading.
Some moved to a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. So these are the policies that we spoke about a meeting or two ago. I'm not sure if this was last or the previous one. One on surveys being given to our students here at the Denne. And some of the policies and protocols we'd like to see in place to make sure that parents have all due notice of both the fact that they're upcoming, the content of the questions, access to the questions, if possible, and contact people for opting out. And also Ryan's office reaching out through our phone call system to let people know in case they miss the parent square notices. The security policy has to do with who has the ability to access our internal security cameras and under what circumstances and how we make sure we keep catalog whose accessing those cameras. So there's no further questions. I make a motion to accept.
I actually have a question on the survey language, where it's reliance as all third-party surveys will be shared with parents to the extent that it's feasible before the survey is administered. What defines feasible for that purpose? Do you think it's kind of vague?
Yep. I would throw that over to Ryan.
So I would say, so our survey that was administered in February, which was just, was the social emotional learning, like student wellbeing, we have access to all of those questions before. So in the spirit of transparency and showing families what would be asked, we can, we certainly like share all those questions. I think the policy subcommittee sort of discussed ones where it might not be, like maybe a survey is nested or something, where there's questions that would come after another question. I think that's.
So are those not disciplinary measures? Would that not be something that we can see beforehand?
I can't think of a survey that, I think we just wanted to go on record saying, any survey that we see with questions that we can see, we would share with parents. I guess I just, I can't be on that example. I can't really think of a survey that we would give students that we wouldn't first know every single question that could possibly come up unless somebody else can think of one, so.
And I also think that the way that we've been doing this and the way that we do it going forward, where a third-party survey and you couldn't see the question when it wasn't mandated, probably you would not enter came doing that survey. But we do have certain surveys that we're required to do for certain funding and can state things like that, that to the extent if, if you have a survey like that and if we did not have prior access to the questions, then this is the policy we give the people to share that. And very clearly the administration understands that parents want that transparency and so we can do anything and everything possible to do that. It's just that we don't actually have the control of it. We're problematic, but policy sector will always do that.
So that, I would make a motion that we accept policy ILD. Just can't remember the one. Electronic survey. ECFAG. ECAG? ECFG. ECFG. Yes. Thank you.
Awesome. So the motion is to accept the two policies. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Done with that alphabet soup. Do you want to take the flyers?
Sure. There are two flyers in your electronic folder. One is for Silver Lake Youth Chair, which despite its name is not part of Silver Lake Regional School District, but still uses the name for local, local youth to participate in cheerleading. This is a registration flyer. It is something that has been sent out in the past for your review. And then Silver Lake Summer Hoops, again with the use of the term Silver Lake, this is not a school program. This is actually a private program, but it is one that has been operating in the communities for several years, since I've been here.
So these are being brought to my attention to follow the policy with respect to distribution. And so it's just, you know, in front of us for approval in the school committee to send these out to our students.
There's a football one too.
There's a football one as well.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Silver Lake Youth Football Registration.
So I don't have anything to add to that, so I believe the distribution is still on the second. All in favor? Peter, did you want to cover the, in your report?
Yes.
Okay. I did not have any other correspondence about the school committee. I had any administration.
I had included the letter that was sent to, sent to me and to Peter, thanking him for his participation in the Safe Schools Program for Students via safety education. So I just wanted the committee to be aware of that, that it's in the community.
All right. For our upcoming town meeting, we will have a warrant article on for three classroom floors. So we'll put it on for the $30,000 to get all three of the classrooms that were requested. And we also, we'll also have a debit transfer articles. So I'm going to, I'm going to run through my list and let's see if I got, I got it right. Let's pull that up. So my guess is we're going to do a, so we're going to need to transfer both into special education and, and transportation.
We could move it to the special education category because that includes all those accounts.
Okay. So then we will end up needing a special town meeting article to move the 60 from to Sped. Right?
Yes.
And then we will need a transfer of some amount, which will, to be determined closer to town meeting, from regular data Sped. So if we have some surplus there, we.
Correct. Any surplus will be transferred as well. Okay.
And then we will need a transfer from some other town source to make up the balance.
Correct.
And then I'm also recommending that we have an article to top up the Sped rainy day fund. I don't think that will end up being too much, but you can.
I did a quick calculation and I think it was, it was like the $2,000 range to bring it up to the new cap.
That might have something to do with a budget increase. Okay. So if you can, you can get me an exact number.
All right. Yeah. We could actually work on that earlier too.
And we can put that in. That's what we're planning to do from the town meeting perspective for Denne. And just to clarify, all of the transfers are for this year in order to supplement our special education line due to changes in tuition and transportation that were anticipated from last year's budget. And then I did pass around folks' annual report. Not too much new in it. Last year I achieved a little bit since everything was sort of so changing and talked a little bit about 2022. Pretty much went right up to March. So some of that is really a repeat because this is for the whole year 2022. And so really we're just talking about sort of our standard language in there, talking about how the school, we were able to reopen and how we have no other restrictions from the school. Talked a little bit about the playground, how we delayed the installation of the rubberized surface until the summer. And then a lot of thank yous. That's about it. If there's anything else that folks want to add, yeah. Folks, if there was a better time, I just plan to turn that in tonight. It's like making one, which is right. Just in time. All right. Unfinished business. Anything on the playground? Are we starting to, are we, are we going to go out to bed to the surface or?
We can either use the mass higher education consulting, which are used for much of the other pieces of the equipment, or we could go out to bed.
Oh, this is easy to use the consortium.
Yes. There are just, there are more variables to it.
Yeah. So we're going to start looking into that because I know we wanted to make sure that we get it done.
We're going to, as soon as we can, actually the date for school closes in June.
When you parked out there, you might have noticed some solar panels on the building. Do you open? Oops, not blowing anymore. So they're, they're moving, they're moving fast with that. I'm sure it takes, I'm sure that's the easy part, getting them mounted, then I have to hook everything up. But I believe they're, they're, they're moving forward around April, 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 April. So I'm not sure when that means we start actually generating power, but it's.
I was just thinking about that, how quickly we could, poop cells kill what else that we're saying.
And then one thing that we are doing and the town is going to pay for, when they came out to look at the site, the project manager suggested moving, they have five or six different boxes that are going on the side of the building, inverters and so on and so forth. And now I'm way outside of my depth on that, but boxes need to go in the building. They decided it probably better not to put them all down on the ground level. They need to have, there's certain boxes that are down there, but there's a spot on the roof where the peak roof is on that wall there to be able to put that in. We talked about it with my jerky and in order to, because this will be there for 20 years and at some point we are going to need to address all the siding on the building. It was to remove a section of the siding and put in a proper backer board on that that they can attach to and channel it properly so that they can install all of that. And then when we come to do the siding, the siding can be placed on either side because what their, what their plan had called for was putting a board over the siding, at which point when we wanted to move the siding, we definitely had to remove all of that stuff from other than the siding. So they're really just, just bringing that in, but the town's taking care of that for us. That can actually even already be done. I'm not sure whether they were out to do that. They were already out.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's good and that will, you know, puts on the side of the building.
When is the expectation that the panels are going to be live in terms of how the equipment is doing that ever so soon?
I mean, sooner rather than later. They need to, they need to get to that next step.
And what quarters are you in?
By this morning? Yes. But they have, they have a late April date that they need to meet their next step in order to meet their requirements with the programs. They're kind of rushing on that. And then I think it's, it's a bit of a waiting period depending on my ever so such as. I hope it's not that long. This has been, I mean, they've had this permitted with them for a year and a half. So this has taken a little long to get the physical stuff up and the contracts, well, it took long to get the contracts done, which is sort of what we're doing now. So their hope is, is for the rest of the months that everything will be live. So once, I'll, I'll, we'll have an update to the next meeting. Yeah. Jason, did you want to talk about your Christine, the SEL working group?
Yeah, just to bring it back to the forefront of the committee and the community's mind. You know, looking at social emotional learning and mental health of our students has been an issue for, for years and even before the pandemic, but really things came into focus coming back and bringing the kids back from remote learning and hybrid learning into a fully realized school day. Teachers see it, parents see it, administrators see it, and the SEL working group is actually a mixture of school committee, parents, administrators, and teachers working together to try and bring programming that's consistent within the school building, to have consistent expectation within the building, consistent language from classroom to classroom, K to six. And, and one of the models that we're utilizing is PBIS. And I saw that Peter Christine on the wagon sent out a link to that on Sunday evening. And also I saw that Peter's School Improvement Council Group has a survey out right now that's actually asking a lot of questions that revolve around the culture and climate within the building and how students feel on a day-to-day basis and how the parents feel their children are being supported. Or if they don't feel they're being supported, this is a great way for us to get that information and data so we can work in a positive play to make sure that kids feel welcome at the Denne and safe in their school community every day so they can get the most from their academic, the academics that we supply to them year in, year out. So it's just an exciting opportunity right now to kind of reset the values as a school and as a community for what our expectations are day in and day out here at the school. I appreciate being a part of the group, so thank you for letting me be there. I appreciate the teachers who volunteered to, to help out with the, the early work, but this is something that eventually that we're all going to have to wrap our arms around and really join as a community again to make sure we're supporting our kids here.
Any questions? And as Jason said, I'll just want to, to please make sure that you take the opportunity to do the survey. More people that are able to apply the better data set that the school tests to be able to focus this work and be able to follow the other students. So please do that. I don't think it takes probably 10 minutes to get through the survey.
I guess so.
If that, so, you know, I think it is really valuable. So please do that. All right. Standing committees. Admin?
Admin with you. Well, had a preliminary discussion with the superintendent about her goals and disseminating that information to all four school committees, along with evidence supporting her movement and attainment on those goals. I've set up some admin review meetings. They're all going to be happening in May because school committee members have until May 1st to turn back in their completed evaluations. And then we have until June 1st to vote on the consensus evaluation. So admin review will take in all of the individual evaluations and we will have a meeting on May 4th at 6 o'clock to discuss and try and come up with some salient points that we find commonalities across evaluations to put into the consensus. Then I'll be charged with writing the consensus evaluation, which I'll bring back to admin review on May the 11th at 6 o'clock to make sure that what I wrote is what the admin review subcommittee wanted to be written and have the opportunity to make any changes to that document prior to a May 18th meeting of the joint Silver Lake Union 31 to vote on the consensus evaluation. So first step is everyone filling out their own individual one. Then admin review will try and synthesize that into a document that we can vote on on May 18th at a joint meeting of Silver Lake Union 31. So stay tuned. Karen and I will be sending out a message to everyone with those materials the first full week of April.
Negotiations. We will be having executive session at the end of this meeting to talk about custodial. And that's, that's all we have going on the matter right now, which is funny. Union 31 did not meet between our last meeting and this one. We have a next meeting on the 13th of April. Ryan, Karen, anything on the legislative front?
It does look like remote participation is going to be extended until March of 2025 and extra dollars to make sure that the free school meals for all will be able to go through June 30th. Other than that, the House Ways and Means Committee has had some testimony delivered to them for some of the other items that we'd like to see include in this year's budget, but nothing's been reported out and no committees have meant to formalize their rules for the next legislative cycle. So we don't know currently that we have these two bills that we had heard filed for as hard in the process, except for the fact that they have gathered several warrant cosponsors in the early process. May the 4th is MASC Day on the Hill. This year it's going to be at the UMass Club in Boston, which is like top of the hub. It is a beautiful panorama, sky view of Boston. We can start there in the morning and then go to the State House to have 13 different culinary departments from vocational schools across the state will be serving us lunch in the rotunda at the State House. And then people are invited to make meetings with their state rep and state senator for later on in the afternoon to continue pressing forward with education policy that's good for our public schools and our public school schools. So that's May the 4th. If anybody's interested in coming, I'd love to have you come.
And then we didn't have any sense of turbulence. And then I assumed from the long list I got from MASC, we have policies that we will be having more policy stuff down the road.
Yeah, we're going to wait until after budget, some elections to have any policy discussions. So, but yeah, there's some work to be done on some policies and just doing some basic housekeeping of some policies that have been on the books for a while.
Something kind of went through. House call. I'm sorry. All right. Mr. Vino?
Thanks, John. Our current enrollment is 241 students. We have a lot of things that are happening in the building as the spring approaches. On March 5th, our school psychologist, Mrs. Japins, had a baby boy, so it's good news to start with. More good news, on March 16th, 34 of our students performed, performed at the All District Band Concert. This is something that did not even exist seven, eight months ago. And we had, our, our kids performed with the middle school beginner band and they did a great job. So it was a very, very fulfilling feeling. We also recently had our talent show, which was always a huge success. A lot of planning went into that and I'd like to particularly thank Mrs. Hempel, Mrs. Hickey, Mrs. Sheen, Mrs. Prario, and Mrs. Murphy for making that a great night. Some of the events that we have coming up, as we do just about every spring, we have Field Day, Future Laker Day, Ride Your Bike to School Day. I'd like to include a blood drive. There was a request from a parent. I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. We're going to shoot for that in June. In the fire department came down to do lessons with all of our students from kindergarten through grade six. They did a great job and the kids really got a lot out of it. I witnessed some kids playing Jeopardy games. I saw fifth and sixth grade kids actually putting on helmets and jackets and putting out a live fire, which was contained. They had the vehicles down here, they had the firefighters showing the kids what the gear looks like, what it sounds like. It was very, all very age appropriate. I thank Captain John Shost that it gets a little bit better every single year. So I think that's a highlight for them. I know, I know it's a highlight for us, so they did a great job and we're very appreciative. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Christine?
Thank you. I wanted to mention the warrants that are circulating tonight. There are five warrants totaling $180,346.77. Thank you for signing. And then just going to briefly talk about the financial. There have been very few changes since last month, so just going to focus on where there have been some changes. The special education deficit has grown by $5,000 and that is due to, as you mentioned earlier, as a staffer who's out and we need to contract those services out, we still need those services, so we're working on that right now. There has been a new estimate for the extraordinary relief for circuit breaker because we had some actual, we had all our actual data in the application pairings opened up. And that estimate has gone from $16,000 to $34,000, so that will improve this year. So right now we have a deficit that stands between all the special education accounts at $157,800. Extraordinary relief to circuit breaker at $34,000. And then as John mentioned earlier, the transfer from auto district vocational of $60,000. That brings us to a deficit of $63,800 at this moment. And then we're just working to see where we had some opportunity from the budget to cover some of this.
And that includes using all of our chapter seven? That includes using all of our special ed funds?
Carryover circuit.
Carryover.
It includes using all of our carryover circuit breaker funds and all of our current yes or the break of funds. Yes.
So we're waiting and we'll get that, I'm sure, later in April. We did talk to the finance committee about that and they're going to think through whether they are comfortable leaving us sort of a bit empty there.
Unable to absorb any variation.
Yeah. So, you know, and so it's welcome to hear that there's that increase because one of the things we did talk. because one of the things we did talk about is do they want to need $20,000 or $30,000 in carryover so that we have a buffer in case we have something go. Not like next year from a budget perspective, yeah. And so they were, they're pretty open to that. And I think they, they just kinda need to get through all of the other budget stuff first and then look at the whole picture and then we'll be working with them to kind of finalize everything and get it to late April, early May.
Right, now as we start to complete things, I think from this point on, we'll be able to have a better sense of where the rest of the budget will be able to help.
Right.
And to an extent.
Yep. I'll shoot to accept Christine's reaction. Second? All in favor? Aye. All right, Mr. Lynch?
Well, thank you. Just wanted to share a quick curriculum update. Inside of your packet, there's a flyer put together by Melissa Farrell about Open SIAID. That's a sixth grade grant that is being used across the district to use a couple of phenomena-based instructional units that are aligned with the state standards. So Mr. Pino, myself, the other principals attended and Melissa Farrell attended a, an Open SIAID workshop on February seventh, and that was followed up by the sixth grade teachers, including Don Shortall, attending to talk about how the implementation with those two units went for Open SIAID. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Pino and Don Shortall for attending and Melissa Farrell for her work to continue to move science instruction forward at the Senate and across the superdency union. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so I only have two quick things for you tonight. The first is the, the school calendar. I'm gonna be asking you to consider voting a change to that calendar. We were notified that there is a, we'd like to change our February date for Special Development Day for teachers to March fifth. This would allow schools to serve as voting sites in some of our communities. And so that's why we have asked for this one change to the calendar, to change the February in-service day to March fifth.
That would be twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm. It's March fifth on the calendar?
No.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth isn't bold, but December fifth. Next up. Motion to accept with change. Let's go to the vice superintendent. Second? Aye.
Thank you. And the only other item for tonight is that our next meeting will include school chores hearing as typically scheduled to be.
Anything else, any other comments? Questions, commentary? There we go. I'm hungry. All right, I'll make a motion for executive session.
I make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to regular session under Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares for our negotiation with the custodians and pursuant to MGL, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law for the approval of our executive session minutes from February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three.
Second? All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.